Join me with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before we notice this, I know it's been published, so we're past that. Approval of the minutes of September the ninth. Are there any comments, corrections, additions, changes anybody would like to offer? If not, do I have a motion to approve?
Submit.
Second?
Sure, I'll second.
Assuming we have a second. Thank you, Cecily. Do we have consent or there's... Hearing no dissent? Hearing no dissent, then minutes are approved. Yep. We're at the point of the agenda. Are there anybody who would like to modify? Any board members want to modify the agenda, add, delete? We had a couple of deletions last time, but I think we're taking those up now. Okay. Hearing none, we'll move forward. We're at the portion where we have citizen comments of non-agenda items, items you wish to bring up as a citizen that not related to tonight's agenda. I have one here. If there are any others, then we'll advise you to submit it over here to your name and over here to our left. Oh, you have another one? Okay, good. This is a non-agenda? Okay. All right, I'll take the first one I've got is from Mr. Crisotello. Please state your name when you come to the mic and your location.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission, thank you for recognizing me and to allow me to speak this evening. My name is Tony Crisotello, and I had previously appeared before the Planning Commission on June the seventh, two thousand and twelve, to request a text amendment to the Beaufort County Comprehensive Plan. The Planning Commission agreed to the request, and then Ann Arnold voted six to one in favor and forwarded on the request to the county council. I'm here this evening to tell the Planning Commission two things. They have to do with the same thing, but they simply is related to a proposal for Bendin Plantation. First, the county council did not hold a meeting and hear from the applicant and the concurring vote from the Planning Commission. I would like... I would know that because I am the applicant. For three months, nothing happened despite a letter from me to the eleven members of the county council. I paid money for a service, and I did not get one. The law is clear in zoning ordinance section seven, four, eighty, and seven, four, ninety. The words "shall" and promptly were not followed at all by the county council. Instead, unilaterally voted to not have a botanical garden environmental education center at Bendin Plantation. Second, the county council, by acting to deny a Bendin Plantation botanical garden environmental conservation easement, because this was a substantial substantive change of the conservation easement. Because the county council denied the possibility of a fifty acre purchase of land for a botanical garden, the conservation easement was substantially changed. The conservation easement states that a court of competent jurisdiction can only terminate or extinguish a use of land as substantive as a botanical garden and environmental education center. Remember, two point five million dollars was appropriated for Bendin Plantation out of the Rural and Critical Lands Program. Now, I'm here to tell you this, Mr. Chairman, and members of the Planning Commission, because your recommendation, which was my request to you, was not followed. I appeared before the county council on the night that it made that decision. And interestingly enough, on the agenda of the county council, it pointed out that they will not allow for the construction of a botanical garden. It has never appeared before on an agenda of the county council that the specific action of a planning committee... of a committee meeting would be forwarded to the county council on the agenda. I will leave it to you to decide why that happened. But the moral of the story is this: In a democracy, we tend to get the kind of government we deserve. And if we're lucky, a little bit better. We can't blame what happens to us on them because we are them. So I'm here tonight to point out to you this. And I'm going to tell you also that because there is a substantial breach in the conservation easement, the conservation easement is a contract. Okay? It is a contract. And a court of competent jurisdiction can amend the conservation easement, but only the court can do that. The county council jumped way, way ahead of itself by doing that, not hearing from the applicant, which is me, and hearing the recommendation from the county planning commission. This has never happened before. If they can do this to me, they can do it to anybody. And this is the danger. This is a severe existential danger that we face as citizens in this county when we avoid the law and in a situation where we say, "Don't do as we do, do as we say." That is a dangerous thing. So anybody that doesn't want to save a specimen tree, anybody that doesn't want to do a fifty foot river buffer setback, anybody that doesn't want to build the parking requirement based on a site plan, anybody that wants to do anything contrary to an ordinance that you propose and get adopted is subject to any question arising based on the actions of the county council that it sets itself above the law. It's a very, very dangerous thing. Mr. Chairman, I plan to take this beyond this moment to find out where the court of competent jurisdiction is. I'm going to find that answer out, and then I'm going to go to court to find out why the conservation easement was amended without even hearing from myself as the applicant or from the county council planning commission. Mr. Chairman, thank you very much for your time, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments, Tony. Rob, do you have any comments or do you have any thoughts that you'd like to offer at this point on this issue? Not required, but just give you an opportunity. I'm not trying to put you on the spot.
Yeah. I think if the planning commission wishes to have, you know, staff interpretation of this issue with conservation easement, I would rather than make that request rather than, you know, we try to decipher that.
All right. You can sit down, Tony.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to say one thing. The planning staff has been over and above in terms of their credibility. Their word is you can trust and believe in the word of the planning department. Okay? That is a very, very important asset that we have in the county government, and my respect for the planning department and its employees is without question.
Thank you.
And also, Mr. Chairman, it appeared in the paper today. You may have seen this story in the paper. So I have been scrupulous, avoiding making public comment, but now it's in the press. You bet. I'm going to find out where the court of competent jurisdiction is and find out why the botanical garden, the environmental education center, was not removed properly from the conservation easement because the conservation easement, in fact, is a contract.
Thank you, Tony. Any comments up here? No? All right. Mary Moyd. Just restate your aim again, please, and your address.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members. My name is Mary Moyd, and I'm a long resident of Ladies Island, South Carolina. I was born and raised on Sam's Point Road, and I don't know if any of you live there or traveled that road, but there is no respectful life on that highway. I retired from the military twenty-three years ago, and my father, Chestamoy, he's deceased now. We used to go to county council meetings, and I didn't understand the gist of everything. But now, when I look back, across the street where Oyster Bluff is, we live at... I live at one fifty-eight, and my parents' home is at one sixty. I remember the planning, and I remember them saying how they were going to set things up. And there are too many, too many ins and outs on one side of that highway to put that median there. I don't know who designed that. I don't know who the architect was, but that right there is a death trap. And I'm telling you, because I lived there, I see it. I see it. People have no respect. And then when we are coming home, the sheriff department is blocking the driveway. The traffic is flowing, and when you ask them to move, they take their time and they move. So I live at that property on one sixty Sam's Point... at one fifty-eight Sam's Point Road that have all the signs that says, "No trespassing." Sam's Point Road is a death trap. I advise you all to please take a look at that. It took me from five oh four this evening to five twenty-two to get out of my driveway on Moy Lane, off of Moy Lane, right on Sam's Point Road. Something needs to be done. I mean, I've never seen it like this, and everyone just go for what they know. The cops are nowhere around. I mean, something has to be done. Traffic needs to slow down on that highway because every time it slows down, there's an accident. Thank you.
I appreciate your comments, Mrs. Moy. Rob, do you care again to offer any comments?
No, I would just say that probably what... You know, I agree that access off of Sam's Point Road is very difficult, especially if you're trying to make a left turn. And I would say that what happened at that intersection is, I would say, the unintended consequence is to control access out of the Parkers, but it's put a median in a location that is not advantageous for the Moy family.
It is not because when I pull out... When I pull out from the... I'm on the right side. When I pull out from the right side, there's a driveway right there on the right. And I'm turning left into the median. There's a driveway from Oyster Cove that comes out, plus there's Parkers right there, another driveway, and then there's one behind me. It's just too many because the last thing I heard, that I remember coming to the meetings before they built Oyster Bluff, that there are going to be two on Sunset Bluff, there were going to be two entrances there. Parkers wasn't even in the makings. So Parkers comes along, and they just disrupt business as usual. No one says anything. We've been going to these meetings. Everything changed, and I'm just saying, what is going on?
Thank you.
That is the address.
We can forward it to our engineering department, and they can...
Okay. And I think that's appropriate. Anybody up here want to add to that?
It's true.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. All right. I'm going to get into the agenda now for the evening. We've got three issues, the first of which is a text amendment on section three, A three dot four oh dot A, permitted activities of the community development code to add short-term rentals as a special use to the Ladies Island Expanded Home Business District. Applicant again, Mary Moyd. Joanna for the planning?
Yes. Good evening, you all. So this first item is a text amendment to add short-term rentals as a special use to the Ladies Island Expanded Home Business District. And this business district extends... It straddles the Sam's Point Road corridor from Miller Drive all the way up to the roundabout. So that's the district, the specific district that we're talking about. The applicant, as you all have heard, lives on Sam's Point Road right at one sixty and is interested in putting a short-term rental on the property. And so that's why this is being applied for, to make this text amendment. Now, a little bit about the Ladies Island Expanded Home Business District. It is a mixed-use district. It has been created to be conducive to small-scale office, service, and civic uses with a variety of residential land uses. Important to note here is that the non-residential uses in the Ladies Island Expanded Home Business District are required to blend into the residential character of the area, which a short-term rental would certainly do. Currently, there are two lodging uses allowed within this district. Under traditional community plans, they are beds and breakfasts, which are five rooms or less, and then inns, which are up to twenty-four rooms. In two thousand and twenty, per ordinance two thousand and twenty dash thirty-two, short-term rental standards were added to our community development code. This was added to all of our transect and conventional zones except for T-one natural preserve and S-one industrial. Community preservation districts like the Ladies Island Expanded Home Business District did not have this update. Short-term rentals were not added to our community preservation districts. But the Ladies Island Home... Ladies Island Expanded Home Business District is consistent with the transect zones that do have this allowance, this special use allowance. So considering the conditions of the corridor... So considering the conditions of the corridor, it's primarily commercial. There are the two PUDs on that corridor. Considering the current use on the property, which is residential at this time, and the consistency with the transect zones with the Ladies Island Expanded Home Business District, short-term rentals seem appropriate as a special use for this district. We did take this to the Ladies Island Community Preservation Committee to have them review it during their September 202021 meeting, and they were not opposed to the amendment to the code to allow the short-term rentals as a special use in this district. And so I also want to point out that it would only apply to this specific district, and if anyone wanted to use the special use, they would have to go before the Zoning Board of Appeals. So it would be a decision made by that board. There would be public hearings and public input. So it's not something that would happen solely under staff's decision if this amendment goes through. And staff recommends approval.
So you're asking us just to enable a special permit process for short-term rentals? The actual terms of the rental would be decided by the Zoning Board of Appeals?
Yes.
Does that include the enforcement provisions? Like, short-term rentals is defined as less than 29 days. How do you prevent persons staying longer? Or what period of time has elapsed before that person can come back again? Just the same way we have for campground standards?
So this would, it refers back to Article 4.1.360, which outlines all of that with regard to short-term rentals and the specifics on what the enforcement action would be to make sure. I'll refer to you.
Yeah, I mean, in Article 4, it pretty much outlines the requirements, you know, what constitutes a short-term rental and all of that. Enforcement would be similar to any other kind of zoning enforcement.
I was looking specifically, too, for the comment, how do you prevent the next day turning it around and then starting another 29-day period? In other words, it becomes more than just a temporary, it becomes more permanent? Is there a provision in, I didn't recall seeing the standard in there.
No, it actually typically, we have the other type of enforcement of somebody using, you know, does not have a permitted short-term rental, turning a long-term rental unit into a short-term. And it's difficult. You have to look for where the unit is advertised. Places like Airbnb. We've rarely had the reverse issue, you know, where somebody is using a short-term rental. We haven't encountered that, using a short-term rental as a long-term rental.
Okay, it was just a inquiry. I was making other comments. Yes.
How does the county tax office get notified? This becomes now a 6% property, correct? Not a 4%?
Yes.
Yes, a 6%. And the county will notify you when, you know, even this 10% of whatever you make the taxes, is whatever they, 10%, whatever the taxes are, plus 10%. Because they thought, when they thought we were doing temporary rental, that's what they were saying to me. So they know, and I haven't read anything.
Okay. I don't know if that answers my question. It might. But I'm wondering if the property is presently in the 4%, does it move into the 6%?
No, it's not 4% now.
It's at 6% now? Oh, so it's already at 6%?
Yeah, so it exists.
Oh, okay. Then, yeah, new point then.
That would be part of the terms condition I would imagine the Zoning Board of Appeals would be looking at.
Yes.
Okay. Anything else?
Juliana, do you anticipate coming before us in every place where there might be a special use permitted? I'm a little worried about piecemeal Airbnb or short-term rentals, whatever you want to call them, flowing into different areas where they may or may not be permitted by special use. I certainly understand this one, but there are neighborhoods where they are illegal, and they are not being overseen by the county, and there is no enforcement, like my own neighbor.
Yeah, if there were
Sorry for the, I know, it's an extension of the question. I'm sorry. But I do think it's a big issue that's coming our way.
Yes, and I agree. I believe we hear about it in our office quite a bit. When, it would move similarly to what you're seeing today. So if it wasn't already permitted within the district and someone was interested in it, they would have to come to you all to request
Do just what Mrs. Moy did. Okay.
Just like Ms. Moyd has done, yes.
Thank you.
And then you all would get to make the decision and move it on through the process.
Thank you. Thank you for being a trailblazer.
That's bottom of the rules.
Yes.
Yeah, exactly.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Juliana. Would the applicant care to make any comments?
That home on Sam's Point Road, that, that has been a part of my family since 1863. It moved from Short Landing Road to Little Capus, from Little Capus Road to Sam's Point Road when it was a dirt road. When my mom and my dad decided that they were going to redo that home, they couldn't tear down the old foundation. Nothing would, the wood wouldn't even be cut, so it's a part, my history is there. All of my siblings, we have homes, but we want, we want our children to have something. And it was always my father's wish that we be able to do something with it. And they loved people, and they loved children. What better way to share their home with everyone? It's not, we're not there to make all the money in the world. We just want our legacy to continue. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any further questions from commissioners?
I make the motion to, to accept the recommendations of the staff and to approve the
Okay. The second. All those in favor, raise your hand. It's unanimous. Okay. Measure's approved. Thank you.
Good luck to you. And that's a good idea, keeping the tradition going.
All right. We're moving to Action Item Number 8, Zoning Map Amendment, Rezoning Request for Two Acres at 2706 Trask Parkway from T2 Rural Neighborhood to C4 Community Center Mixed Use.
I'm back.
Hello again.
And we do have a couple of slides to help illustrate what we're talking about. So this is a rezoning request for two acres on Trask Parkway, 2706. It is, as you just said, a T2 Rural Neighborhood zoning currently, and the request is to change it to a C4 Community Center Mixed Use District. A portion of the property, half an acre, is in the ACU zone, which you can see on the map here. It's the hashed lines, kind of cuts through that front corner. And that's the APZ Accident Potential Zone 1, which has a high rate of probability of accident zone. It is also the highest DNL zone for your noise contour. On the property now, there is in a historical structure, a non-conforming structure. It is a gas station. It has been operating as a gas station for 50 years or more prior to 2018. Around that time, the owner went bankrupt, the property changed hands, and a zoning permit was issued for the grandfathered non-conforming gas station use. Per that zoning permit, the gas station needed to be reestablished within a year. If it took longer than a year or more, the grandfathered use was lost. And that's what happened in this case. And that's why the applicant is proposing a rezoning in order to allow the gas station use under that C4 Community Center Mixed Use zoning. As far as the comprehensive plans are concerned, it is consistent with our comprehensive plans. It views, envisions this area to be community center, but it is completely surrounded by the T2 Rural Neighborhood property. So it would be a spot zoning if the rezoning were to go through. And we also asked the MCAS, the air station, to review this because they are under that ACU's zoning. We wanted to make sure everything was compliant with that. And MCAS reviewed it and came back and said, given their standards, they oppose the rezoning for where it is. I do believe we do have a representative from MCAS on the Zoom in case there are any questions. But given all of that, with the spot zoning and our desire to work with the air station to make sure we're not in conflict with their ACU zoning, we find it incompatible along with MCAS, and we can't support it as a result. So our recommendation is not to support.
Okay. Questions?
And you all can see it there. I neglected to talk about it, but it's a little yellow there. The orange that you see at the intersection is a Community Center Mixed Use. Then you've got the dark green is your T2 Rural Neighborhood. Your light green is T2 Rural, and then the air station is right there.
Yes.
So what would be some of the things or some of the ways the property owner could use the property in a T2 rural, right? That's what he is now?
T2 rural, yes, sir. And he has the convenience store and a liquor store is there currently in use. And that was a grandfathered
Yeah, it was grandfathered.
non-conforming use that was, got up and running prior to the zoning permits.
So that stays?
Being lost. Yep, so that's there.
Only thing that
It's only the gas station that we're discussing this evening, yes.
Okay.
And T2 rural does not allow for the gas station.
Okay. Well, is there anything else he can do? It's two acres. I'm, you know, so we got a convenience store, we have a liquor store. Is there anything else he can do with the property?
Similarly, with retail kind of things. Rob, would there be alternative retail options under T2 Rural Neighborhood that could be used in lieu of a gas station?
I mean, there's a wide range of retail and service uses in that district.
Okay, so he's got plenty of uses, plenty of other things he can do.
Are you talking about rural or would the district propose?
The T2 rural.
No, no. In what?
T2 rural. Yeah, there's some limited, like agricultural support industry or businesses.
Could he build a house there and live there?
Yes.
Okay. How many houses? One? Two, two acres?
One ACU's room?
Yeah.
One house?
Yeah.
Okay.
Are there any restrictions to that breadth of alternate uses because of it being in the ACUs?
Yeah, there are limitations in the, that particular ACU zone because it's the accident potential. Is it APZ 2 or 1?
1.
APZ 1. So there are, especially with any kind of use that where people congregate are really limited in that area because of hazards due to the jets at the air station.
So it's safe to say that the grandfathering of the two retail outlets is pretty much limiting?
Yeah.
Okay.
Is this well and septic in the area predominantly?
Yeah, yeah. Yes, I would. There's sewer access on the property.
Okay, but well?
I would have to double-check for you. I do not have that.
Okay. The applicant?
The applicant is here.
Come on up. Is it Nomenko?
Yes, sir. Hi, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Alexi Nomenko. I go by Alex, and I'm the owner of the 2706 Trask Parkway. As you heard, unfortunately, when I purchased the property, we had, I had a current zoning, and I had a year to open, reopen the store. I was able to have liquor license and a convenience store open. But due to the COVID and other situation, the gas station pumping gas would not be able to open. And because of that, but the gas station, you actually don't make any money pumping gas. But it does bring people in, and it allows the convenience store to provide basic goods and services for people in the community. I have supportive letters from some of the neighbors next door which like the gas station to be reopened. And to answer your question, sir, we are on city water. There is a city sewer. The car engine is on a septic tank, but the gas station does not have a lot of food traffic, so septic tank is sufficient enough. Prior to purchase, the gas station went through Phase 2 environmental study and have a clean bill of health. The tanks been maintained by me due to the last years, and all the tests were done to them, so they have no leaks and any environmental hazard. It is a small gas station. It's only two pumps. So it serves a very small food traffic and small car traffic. But the pumping gas is very crucial to operate in the convenience store. I did spoke extensively with the Marine Station, and they told me they cannot allow rezoning because it will set the precedent. But on the other hand, they, I believe, they lost a case with the Grace Hill Baptist Church when the Grace Hill Baptist Church was allowed to build extra 17,000 square feet facility. And it's in the same zoning, same fly pattern. That's all I have to say. If you have any other questions, I would gladly answer it.
Why did COVID keep you from opening, reopening the pump station?
Couldn't get technician to actually service the station for six-plus months. And then the pump supplier did not have pumps in. And now they, they've been non standby for the last three months, but we couldn't install them because couldn't get a permit.
But the convenience store
A convenience store
did stay open?
Yes, convenience store been operating for a year-plus with the mixed results.
So one could stay open, the other couldn't?
I don't know how that works, but that's
Well, he was able to keep the convenience store open, so it was grandfathered within the year. But he couldn't get the pumps fixed within a year, so it wasn't grandfathered anymore.
And the pumps which previous owner left were missing parts and were created a great hazard. So the pumps had to be completely replaced by the recommendation of the fuel supplier.
Okay.
What size tanks are there?
It's a 12,000-gallon tank of steel wrapped in fiberglass, three compartments. So it's a very simple, if you know anything about gas station, it's very small.
Yeah. The, a question for you, please. The gas station that's about a block away, but it's a long block, at 2770 Trask, is that grandfathered in or is that in a zone?
It's in, it's in the Community Center Mixed Use zone already, so it
Okay, so it is. So he's pretty close to that zone. He's not that far away. In fact, I guess the question would be, where, where does that zone kind of, where does that zone change? Is it at Jones Field Road or?
It's just before. It's a, if you, do you see it there on your screen?
Well, I'm looking at the Google map, and I got the two gas stations here, and they're not too far away from each other. One's right off Jones Field. What's there?
You talking about the two gas pumps, or you talking about two different stations?
Two different, there's a gas station right down the block.
Right down, yeah.
2770.
Going toward Beaufort, yes.
These are the gas stations. Right here, the Shell.
Yeah, the Shell.
And then right up the road.
Yeah, okay.
Towards, away from the air station, towards the river.
Towards Whale Branch?
Actually, the Shell station is actually closer to the air station than this gas station.
Yeah, and across the street to that, it used to be another gas station. But I don't know if it still exists or not.
I'm going to take a wild guess and say that Shell station's got much larger tanks than 12,000 gallons. I don't think there's a Shell station on this planet that's got 12,000.
Eight pumps.
Eight pumps.
Eight plus pumps, I can count them up there.
Okay, any other questions? Any questions from the public regarding this matter? I'm sorry. Yes, please.
Yes, ma'am, please.
Hello.
Hi.
How are you doing?
I'm Dawn, Low Country Acupuncturist Land and Resource Trust. My question, I guess, is just about the redundancy of the services that he's, that is being considered. And I'm just wondering if that's how we want to, if that's the direction we want to go into. It seems like gas stations are kind of like the go-to development, and I think we could probably use a little more imagination, I guess, is my comment.
Thank you. All right. Commissioners, do I hear any other questions? If not, can I have a motion? If not, can I have a motion? Do we either approve or not approve the staff's recommendation?
Well, can I talk about it for a second?
Sure, as long as you make a motion.
I mean, I think in the light of COVID, that a lot of things have been extended, and I can attest firsthand that it's hard to get certain things, especially in the manufacturing world. And I feel bad for this gentleman for buying this gas station and not being able to get the parts and pieces to keep the gas pumps running. And I can also attest that if you don't have fuel, you can't really keep a convenience store open. It's just, you don't, the fuel doesn't make money, but it does attract people to buy stuff in the store. And that being said, I make a motion to approve the upzoning of this piece of property.
Would you make the motion in terms of the staff recommendation?
Okay, I make a motion to recommend approval of the county council of this 2706 Trask Parkway from T2 rural neighborhood to C4 community center mixed use.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay.
Can I still ask a question?
Yeah, I'm gonna ask now, if there are any further, any further comments. Go ahead.
Okay. My question is, or we'll play make believe for a minute. If this becomes a C4 zone, could this turn into something totally different a month from now? And could we be sitting here saying, what the heck did we do here? We thought we were saving a small, a small business, and now we've created a monster. So is there something else that could happen here?
As with any changing of zoning, you are changing the allowed uses on the property. So yes, there could be potentially something else there down the line that would be able to be done under the community center mixed use district that wouldn't have been able to be done under the T2 rural neighborhood.
Give me, without prejudicing the application, give me a couple of examples of what somebody could do in a C4.
So the C4 district would allow for a little over 20,000 square feet of commercial development on a two-acre parcel. So there's lots of different types of things that could fit into that. Let's see.
Guess what he's looking for is something more--
Not gonna get a Walmart.
Something worse than--
No.
Not worse, that's a poor choice.
But a medium-sized grocery store.
Are there other uses, Rob, that you can point out? Under C4?
You know, basically, it'll allow any kind of retail service, you know, office-type use. The thing to keep in mind is it's still underneath the airport overlay district with its most restrictive. So any kind of use where people congregate, it wouldn't, I mean, obviously, that small parcel, you wouldn't be able to have a shopping center or something, you know, tenants. But, you know, there's restrictions that are placed because of the airport overlay district.
Okay. All right. I have a comment. I find myself having a vote against the upzoning. One, the ACUs, to me, is a sacred protection that we try to instill with our military bases. And I do also believe that it's a redundant service that's available probably less than a half a mile down on the same side of the road with the convenience store and multiple pump capability, the Shell station. And thirdly, because the surrounding areas are mostly rural. We don't want to create a chain reaction of C4 community center applications in that rural area. I would vote against it myself, but I'm ready to take a vote. Would you again state your motion?
I make a motion that we recommend approval for 2706 Trask Parkway from T2 rural neighborhood to C4 community center mixed use.
Okay. All those in favor, raise your hand. All right, we have three, four. All those against? Two against? The motion passes to recommend upgrading from T2 rural to C4 community center mixed. Thank you. All right. Item number nine, zoning map amendment, zoning request for 6.26 acres at 186 Cherokee Farms Road from T2 rural to T4 neighborhood center.
Uh-oh.
That's not the right map. Different map. That campground just can't, wants to be heard.
Okay. Well, this, and I don't know, has anyone joined us on Zoom? Do we have anyone?
Yes, there is.
There is somebody. I heard a voice.
I'm sorry.
Okay, and I don't know if we have the applicant representing this project here. Okay. All right. I mean, we can move forward, but so I wanted to give you a little bit of background. This item was originally on the September 9th agenda.
Correct, yep.
And, you know, so you would have received in that packet a staff report with a recommendation, and actually, that recommendation was for denial. And the applicant decided that day to pull it from the agenda because they wanted to have an opportunity to kind of look into some of the issues that staff brought up. And so that's kind of where we are right now. The, what is, the original proposal was to zone this property. This is located on Cherokee Farms Road, just short of the entrance of Habersham from T2 rural to T4 neighborhood center. The applicant is now requesting to change what their request, the zoning they're requesting to T4 Hamlet Center Open. So that's what this map is reflecting. So it's a little bit of a difference from the original application. And to give you some background, our original concern was that you have, if you can go to the next slide. You have the Habersham community, and then across the street on Cherokee Farms Road, you have Cherokee Farms. And within those two developments, you already have a main street along Market Street in Habersham, and the proposal was for that to continue across into the Cherokee Farms community. And there's actually room for about 150,000 square feet of expansion of that. The zoning district that they chose for this site originally was T4 neighborhood center, which is, in its very definition, designed to be a main street-type commercial. And so as staff, we did not support that because there's already a main street that serves this development, and having that similar zoning across the street did not make sense. Since that time, the applicant has met with the Habersham Land Company to look at what types of uses might be appropriate for that area along Cherokee Farms Road that would complement what they currently, you know, the current main street of Habersham and the residents in that area, but not compete with the main street development. And so that's what they're submitting today for this application. If you can go to the next slide. So they came up with some very conceptual plans, and I always have to give a caveat. When they do this, this is not, there's, you know, this is more what they did to kind of look at what was possible to develop here under the T4 Hamlet Center Open zoning, but this is not in any way binding them to develop in this fashion. The type of uses they're looking at are things that, currently, there is a 12,000-square-foot kind of metal building on that site. They're looking at the possibility of converting that to some sort of brewery and outdoor beer garden. That type of use, probably in a main street setting, would not be as appropriate, but in this one, might be more medical office building. And I think they also have a veterinarian service. So they sat down with the folks at Habersham, and they kind of came to an agreement that some zoning less than what that T4 neighborhood center would be, you know, they might, the folks at Habersham might support that for the site. So all of this has happened between the last meeting and this meeting. So just to give you some background. As far as staff's position on this, we're certainly more comfortable with the T4 Hamlet Center Open district. We still feel that that is, you know, a little bit too intense, and probably T4 or T2 rural center might be appropriate. The one thing that we do not have is that we reached out to the air station. Their original, you know, stance on this was that they did not support it because they did not have enough information. We sent them the updated information, and they said they still need more time to formulate an opinion on whether they're going to support it or not. There are some differences in terms of where this is located compared to, like, the gas station on Trask Parkway that you just looked at. That was an accident potential zone 1. This is in the, I would say, use the term loosely, the quietest of the noise contours. It's a 65 to 70 decibel range, which I use the word quiet in a very loose fashion there. And it's, you know, within the airport overlay district, it's the least restrictive, but it's still, you know, the air station is definitely concerned about encroachment in that area. And so, you know, they definitely want to take a look at the rezoning. But the applicant, I don't know that they're here, and so it's really hard to speak on, you know--
Well, maybe we should defer this until our next meeting. I mean, if you haven't gotten a response back yet from the military, and the applicant, obviously, he's not here to pitch their application. I don't know that we have all the information we need.
I concur.
Can we defer this?
I think you can defer for 30 days, and I think the fact that we have not, we received an email today from the air station saying they needed more time. So they did receive the revised application, and I think Mary Ryan Krieger from the air station has joined us on Zoom if you have any questions for her.
Well, that's who the Zoom lady is.
She's happy to provide a list of examples following the meeting.
I'm sorry?
She says she's happy to provide a list of examples following the meeting.
Oh, that was for the Trask.
I apologize.
Okay. Questions? But good evening. My apologies for being the voice in the back. But this is, this is Mary Ryan Krieger, and yes, we just, with the new information we were provided, we just want a little bit more time so we can give a thorough and thoughtful response. And I apologize for the delay on that. But yes, thank you.
All right, thank you. Is there any objection to deferring?
I just had a question. Which, which one do they really want to do here? The brewery or the assisted living? Could be the same thing, but--
Well, when I sat down with them, I told them, I said that basically, one of the restrictions of the ACUs is a maximum density of two units per acre. And so they would, the air station would, I believe, would view assisted living, you know, any density that's greater than two units per acre would probably be not very supportive of that. You know, so, but these are just two proposals. They're more for the, in terms of them being able to figure out really how much commercial would the zoning district support.
Well, as I understand, the development plan at this point is just a rough idea of how we might consider using land. It's no commitment. It's no obligation on their part. Once the zoning is changed, they can do anything that the zoning would allow.
Yes. But it does allow--
But it has to go through the process.
Yeah. It kind of shows, I think, what we are lacking with the last of middle. Whenever, you know, these transit zones, T4 neighborhood center or even T4 Hamlet Center Open, without a plan or some sort of master plan, it's very difficult to picture what type of development could occur, especially with a main street. And that's why we were very much in opposition of the last, you know, last proposal that came forward at the September meeting, because there's already a main street in the area.
Right.
It has a lot of capacity to expand. So we had suggested in the staff report that if they are going to look at any type of, you know, commercial development in that area, it ought to be things that complement a main street, not compete with.
Well, there has to be a traffic impact analysis done, too, because, I mean, that's just a very narrow road coming into the Habersham complex, and you've got retail on this side, retail on this side, and you've got all the folks coming in and out.
Yeah, and there have, you know, there, when Cherokee Farms came in, they did a traffic impact analysis. With us, the T4 neighborhood center was really the tipping point, and that was another thing, you know, that I think that caused them to reconsider that request, because, you know, the downtown Habersham, that little main street area, is only about four acres, and there's over 100,000 square feet of commercial, office, and residential. That type of development could easily trigger a traffic impact analysis. But if it were a lesser zoning district with less vertical, then it's, you know, it's six acres, and it's probably about borderline of whether it triggers it or not.
Okay, so rather than practice a few more what-ifs, with there being no dissent, that we will defer this to the next meeting for further review and input by the applicant and by any of the directed parties, impacted parties. Okay.
Ed, can I just add one thing? Just related to the staff. To my knowledge, we really haven't had a lot of discussion about T4 Hamlet Center Opens. That hasn't come up a lot. Am I correct in thinking that?
You mean in general or?
Well, I mean, have we had any, have people asked for that designation? I guess is what I'm asking.
I think we've had a few cases.
A few? Okay.
Yeah, I mean, it's, to provide some background, the Village Center and Ladies Island, there's portions of Sea Island Parkway and Ladies Island that have that zoning.
And I know that Sea Island Parkway, as it goes out to St. Helena, there are designations out there for sure.
For various smaller area in the Coroner's community.
And beyond, actually, at the intersection of Seaside Road and, you know, where the restaurant is.
That's a different district, but--
That's T4, I think, isn't that T4 neighborhood? It doesn't matter. My point is that the one reason I think we should defer is that we, I don't think we've had enough experience with T4 neighborhood Hamlet, number one, so I'd like to make sure that we really know what's going on there, not to talk about what-ifs. And the second, I mean, I agreed with Ed on the last vote about the kind of support really, and persistence support we should have for the ACUs. And so for that reason also, I feel strongly that they need to weigh in. I mean, that was a point that was made in the last go-around, so we need to be consistent, at least, you know, for my vote. So long as they know that, and thank the woman who weighed in from the air station. Thank you.
All right. Any other comments? All right, thank you, Rob. I guess we're down to a chairman's report. The only thing, Rob, would you please come back up here? I want to publicly acknowledge on video for the world and congratulate the new director of planning, community development planning director, Rob Merchant, who's been promoted from deputy director to director, and for now and forever, it's yours.
Forever.
Congratulations. Until you no longer, we should be there. All right, thank you. All right, anybody else? Anything for the good of the cause? If not, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir.